Thanks for coming out this evening. I don't need to call the meeting to order because that was done at the beginning of our executive session. So first, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of August 4th, the special board meeting of August 24th, and the regular board meeting of September 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Kobel.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Okay, and we're moving right into awards and recognitions.
Okay, good evening, everyone. First in our recognitions tonight, we will honor a former Heights student who has had a multitude of life experiences and adventures over the last, past five decades, and a wall of military honors to show for it. But there is one special thing that he says is missing from that wall, a high school diploma. Lloyd Granis enlisted in the United States Navy in 1959 when he was 17. He served in the Bay of Pigs invasion in 1961, and in the Vietnam War for almost three years. He was on active duty through 1970, and in the reserves until 1978. In his civilian life, he worked for Lincoln Electric for nearly 30 years. Feeling he called to serve once again, Mr. Granis joined the Military Sea Lift Command in 2009, and worked on a tanker ship in the Persian Gulf. He had to leave the Navy for good in 2011 due to a cancer diagnosis which he beat. Lloyd has lived in Cleveland Heights on and off for 40 years. He has seven children, 13 grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. He is now enjoying life living in Florida with his wife. Petty Officer Granis, we thank you for your service. Through your accomplishments and vast military education, you have certainly earned this honorary high school diploma. Please come forward to the front and center of the room to receive your diploma and take a photo with Board President Pepler and me. Come on forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So next in our recognitions, a Monticello 7th grader who recently landed the dream job of many Cub reporters working for Time Magazine. Maple Boucher has been named Kid Reporter for the Time, for Time for Kids, a nationwide classroom publication that's part of Time Magazine. In this role, Maple will have the opportunity to conduct interviews and write articles for the Time for Kids print edition and website. During her application process, Maple wrote two original stories, one on the little free library movement, and another on a Republican National Convention coming to Cleveland in 2016. She will hold this position with Time for Kids through August. According to Maple's bio, her top dream assignments are interviewing J.K. Rowling, covering the Summer Olympics, and interviewing someone from the National Park System. Maple, we're looking forward to reading your stories and seeing the amazing places this opportunity takes you. Please come forward to receive your certificate and take a photo with the board president and me. Come, just give her a round of applause as she comes. And finally, I would like to recognize our new Coordinator of Communications, Scott Wortman. Scott, if you'll come forward. Scott joined us last week to take over for Angie Shaker, who left the district in August. Scott spent the last nine years at Wake Forest University as a Director of Athletics Communication. He served as a spokesperson for the nationally recognized athletic department, and also oversaw digital communications and social media. Scott has a bachelor's degree in English from Ohio Northern University, and a master's of education from Bowling Green. Let's give him a hand and welcome him. And this concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you. All right, well, I, for the first time in a very long time that I can remember, we have neither requested audience or anyone who has signed up for statements from the audience. So it's actually one of the things that I've heard from people who've worked in other districts is, "You guys have a lot of people that sign up for statements from the audience who've worked for other districts and then come here." So this is very unusual. Moving on to the superintendent's report. No specific report. Okay. We are moving through to personnel. I think I can take all of these together. Can I? Plus the addendum. Could I have a motion to approve items E. 1 through 6, plus the addendum?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Mr. Gaynor.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Kobel.
Yes.
And now, we're moving on to business services. Mr. Chagallis, are you going to kick things off for us for that, or you want me to just take the motion on each?
Yeah, let's go through the agenda items and then...
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve item F. 1, the change order for the Wiley-enabled projects?
So moved.
Second.
So these are change orders to the Wiley project that occurred over the last year and through the summer. And I have Pat O'Brien from PMC here to, who's available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
These are items, these would be things that the Facilities Accountability Committee, we've already discussed them at FAC, I believe, or no?
We have not discussed the details of these, Eric.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I mean, certainly, I can...
I wasn't sure if this was old, this, even though they're in the past, if they've, I'm trying to, for my reference, if I've already heard about them in detail before or not. I mean, I read the materials, but I wasn't sure if they were...
We have not discussed them in this form in detail.
Okay.
So it will be discussed with the FAC at the meeting next week?
Correct.
Any questions?
Should we expect these are the last of our...
This would be the next to last. We are still gathering up data on changes we made in July and August to meet some additional enhancements for the educational environment. You put it on paper, and then you walk through the building and say, "Ah, we should have done this, we should have done that." I think there'll be, I know there'll be one more change, or I'm hoping there's only one more change order to finish everything else up next door.
And the flip side, is anything we do inside the Wiley building, we're gonna, it's not gonna be just for two years, it's gonna be for four years and then some?
That's correct.
Quick question. Just to clarify what you just said, you said, as you walked through, you said, "We should have done this, we should have done that." Have you ever been on a project where you haven't walked through it at about this point in the project and said, "We should have done this, we should have done that"?
No. I actually had a concert in a building a week ago Sunday, and we walked through the building, and I was there again today, and we saw just little things. It's part of the nature of operating the building when you get in it, and so this is not uncommon at all.
Right. It's my sense that that's, this is the nature of these types of projects, so, yeah.
Correct.
Eric, were you going to ask?
No.
Okay. All right, Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Kobel.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve item F. 2, which is the recommendation to approve payment in lieu of transportation for the school year.
So moved.
Second.
So when we declare transportation impractical to a particular school, then the second action that goes with that is we offer payment in lieu of to those families. And the list of students you have are all of the students who are eligible for payment in lieu at each of those schools. We send them information, and then it's up to them to request that payment in lieu of. So we don't know that every one of them will take advantage of it, but those are all the ones that are eligible to take advantage.
What are the, some of the names have a PN or an NR after them, what is that? Does anyone know what that means?
I do not know, Eric.
It doesn't have anything to do with the action, but I was just curious what it was.
Yeah, I do not know.
Okay.
I can certainly find out and get back with you. I don't know what those stand for.
No rush, no biggie.
Okay, Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Kobel.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve item F. 3, the removal of obsolete IT inventory items?
So moved.
Second.
We just identified a typo.
Okay.
It's from 1911.
1911. That's some old technology right there.
We're assuming those are the world's earliest PCs that were taking offline.
So this is a pretty daunting...
Telegraph machines is what we're...
Go ahead, Mr. Chagallis, sorry.
Sure, thank you. So this is a pretty daunting list.
Yeah.
But what's happening is, we are transferring to a new inventory system, and this is some cleanup of the inventory that's been in place for a long time. So this is a, this list is a compilation of things that have been disposed of over the years, and they simply didn't get off of the inventory, and also things that, while the initial value may have been something that was worth tracking, it's so old now that we no longer want to have it cluttering the inventory and bothering to track whether we have it, where we have it, and whether it's still there, because the value is so low on it, it's just not worth our time to do that. So that's, that's what this is about.
There's a lot of these items we've already disposed of, this is making it official.
That's right, and that's exactly right. We actually, you know, this is a format, not a formality, but we, it is a formality. We need the board's approval to officially take these off the list, we can't do it otherwise.
In the IT report we got, I think they said they had like, maybe eight to 10 tractor-trailer loads of old stuff, was that, did I read that right, where they were pulling out so much old stuff from the high school? It seemed like a lot, that's why, it seemed like too many. I was like, can't imagine we have that much stuff, but this is a lot of stuff.
Right, this is a lot of stuff. Remember, again, a lot of this stuff is long since gone, right? We're simply cleaning it off the list, is all we're doing now.
Is the price involved, the per-unit cost, is that, is that how much it went for?
New.
That was new?
New.
Oh, is that how much we paid?
That was the new value, right. That was the new value.
So I was wondering who calculated all of this after the fact?
Yeah, no, those were new values that were put in place when they were added to the inventory.
So they've depreciated to nothing?
Essentially, that's right. I mean, when you look at some of these things that are 10, 11, 12 years old, they essentially have no value.
Although the betas are coming back, I know beta...
Betas are coming back, okay.
Well, 1989 was a good year for a lot of stuffs.
You're such a hipster, Eric.
1980 25-inch colored monitor.
Which is already gone, unfortunately.
That's probably gone. Might have some antique value, but...
Any other questions? Mr. Gaynor.
Did we get a motion?
We did.
I second it.
I move it.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Kobel.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve item F. 4, the quarterly contracts that are attached.
So moved.
Second.
So this is our routine quarterly action to approve all contracts that come to the school district.
Anything new out there? They all look familiar, but I don't know that I'm missing anything.
No, there isn't anything that's, that is new that we haven't done before.
Nothing? Okay, Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Kobel.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
And I think I can take items 5A through G together. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
These are our donations. I think they're pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments?
Very generous people in the community.
Mr. Gaynor.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
And I think I can take items 5A through G together. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
These are our donations. I think they're pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments?
Very generous people in the community.
Mr. Gaynor.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Kobel.
Yes.
Yes.
So, one more item, although not on the agenda, is a discussion and a presentation to the board on the latest exterior elevation minor modifications as we work through our process of getting approval from the Architectural Board of Review with the city of Cleveland Heights. And I have John Orsini here with us tonight, and I'm gonna have John walk you through those minor changes, and then we'll be available to take any questions that you have. So, John, and John, you've got some things, let me pass those out.
Yeah, I got some, I brought some colored copies, because sometimes it's hard to see. Sorry. Just pass them over. Yeah, pass them over. Thanks. So as Steve said, over the last, I'll say month, we have been meeting with the Architectural Board of Review of Cleveland Heights to review, to review the high school and the elevations. For the most part, they were, they were approved, they were approving 95% of the building with minor, very minor modifications that were to be made. And those included some, some simple jam details and a few other...
Simple what?
Jam details, like, like how the windows meet the walls.
Okay.
The one area that they wanted us to look at were the east and the west entries, as well as the south towers. This right here is the east entry. As we can see, it looks very similar to the, the architecture prior to the ABR comments. What really happened here was, there was a modification to some of the cornice and some of the detail of the copings at the, at the top of the wall, as well as a few of the bands. They thought that it was better to be a little less formed and a little simpler in regards to its aesthetic, so...
You're referring to those vertical...
No, we're referring to the top of the, of the wall there. The very, very top. I don't have a pointer.
Of the entry.
Of the entry, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and what we did was, after talking to them, we looked at how we can maintain, maintain the architecture without, without changing, without changing the overall appearance. So we thought that this was a, this was a great solution, because it, it allowed the consistency of some of the lines that we talked about a year ago to still be in the project. It also maintained that overall approach to the entry that, that, that the board approved. So this, this element became a little simpler.
Do you have your pointer, John?
Yeah, Steve's getting a pointer right now.
Because I don't remember that, what was that like before?
Go to the back of your packet.
No, you know what, I don't have the befores on here.
It's in the back of the before.
The back, the last two pages are black and white, it would be the, I'm gonna refer to the two, I think.
Thank you.
So you're losing the, you're losing the ornamentation right above the door.
See this right here?
Yeah, that's...
That cornice was simplified. And just so everybody knows, this, the way that we ended up treating this was using, using an architectural character that we used throughout the building. So rather than doing something that has a shape, we ended up using what's called a soldier course, which you see above the windows here, and you see above the windows over here. So there's that, that, that consistent element throughout the building, once again, keeping the whole building, having the architecture flow from one side of the building north to the Washington side.
What's that product?
It's, it's the concrete, it's the concrete block.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same product. The other thing that we did here was, we maintained this being one color, monochromatic, so that you don't have something that's a little foreign in regards to color, because we thought that that was one of the key things. You remember, we'd always talked about these elements here as being different in color from, from the brick and from, from the architecture of the academic, the new academic wing to the north of the 1926 wall, which is, which is this element right here. When you look at this elevation, the other thing that, that they were pretty adamant about was, was providing a moment of separation between the entry and the academic bar. So we did that with an element of glass. The glass goes from, from the roof all the way down to, to this water table, that's called a water table. And we can see that again...
John, while you're going to the next, pardon the ignorance of this question.
That's okay.
But it's surely an ignorant question. Does, do these, do boards usually get to this level of detail and...
Architectural Boards of Review?
Yeah, and then the reason I ask is, I would think that there's some reasoning they have in terms of the architecture of the community, and again, pardon the ignorance of this comment as well, I'm not necessarily, it starts screaming at me like, "Oh, my gosh, what were you thinking in this first drawing?" I mean, you know, this doesn't go, you know, so can you help us a little bit with that?
Yeah, what, what the, what the Architectural Board of Review was saying was that, when we had the cornices on this, the replication was a little too similar. And if anybody, if everybody knows, you know, in regards to historic preservation and that kind of stuff, and that's the side that they're coming from, as preservationists, you wouldn't necessarily replicate or copy. So that's where the whole issue came into, into play. So they, they thought that if we had a more, and I'm gonna use the word minimal, somewhat of a more minimal approach to some of these elements, that it would, it would still tie the architecture from the 1926 building, which we all see now, back into the additions that occur to the south and that continue on through the north of the building. So their, their, their reasoning was of replication. This elevation, you know, once again, we can see how these elements start to tie together, and how this band here, the, even though it's subtle, this, this line right here is continuous through the building. Same thing with, you know, same thing, of course, with this one, and then with some of these other ones. You start to see them without, without doing a polychromatic band of the building, which would look like a bad sweater.
That's not a good thing.
No, that's not a good thing.
What is the, the, the black marking along the ground level, what is that?
It's a garden hose.
Oh, this right here? Yeah, that's a big garden hose. That's actually, that's a thick contour that I couldn't figure out how to thin on the PDF file, so, yeah.
It's just so interesting, it shows up like in all of them, like in different configurations too.
Well, you know why? Because we took different views of the, of the building. So that's the same contour line, you just see it from different angles. So you see that, Paul, we don't want you to trip over that. As you can see, the one positive thing that, 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 you know, we were able to maintain was the idea of the window. So this, you know, this, what we'll call a, I'll just use the word pella, even though I shouldn't, it's like a pella double-hung window with, with muttons. So we were able to maintain that architecture through the entries, which we thought was really critical in regards to, in regards to how the building progresses from the 1926 through the 2015 additions. So, this is, this is actually very, I think this is a very elegant approach, especially when it becomes monochromatic, because you really start to read this as entry. The other thing that you start to see in this photo, and you don't necessarily see it as much, is you start to see really the transparency that's happening at these entries. So you could look in and see the activity, as well as the students from the inside could look out and see, see on this side, you know, the baseball field, because this is about lines with outfield, with the outfield. The other element that they, that they talked about was having a relationship between, between this entry piece and between this stair tower. So once again, we continued that architecture. So we have, we have the band at the coping, and then we have, you know, we maintained the idea of, of this, of some of the lines that you can really start to see. What's nice about this image is you could start to see them right here, right? Even though it's not continuous, you see that, and once again, you see it here. So we were able to maintain that, which is really a positive thing. These didn't show up too well, so... But those, those were, those were the changes that were made. We are meeting with the ABR again tomorrow to get final approval, because we have, I'm gonna say it was like 99% approval, except for these four elements. So everything else, they were, they approved. There were some minor comments. I don't even know if there was any even worth mentioning. Yeah. They, I'll say this, everybody there was, was good to work with, they're very, they're very competent people, and Ron, Ron Nide has, has always helped us. He's, he's the chief building official, so he's, we've had good experiences there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Are we doing any? No, I was just gonna say, I, the, I think I mentioned, I think on the, on the front, the two front doors, well, I said both, I said to both, both, oh, I guess all four entries. I actually preferred your older one with the ornamentation. I liked, I thought it was an excellent compromise, it was, when I finally found the definition, a sort of strip classicism, which I really liked.
Yeah.
I think that the, I, the...
You were there one.
Right, yeah.
I don't know how many you went to.
I went to, I was at the ABR meeting that went, I was there from 4 till 8:30, so that was a...
Yeah.
It was very interesting, and, it was very interesting to see how the ABR functioned prior to our presentation, so it was very interesting, is how I would encapsulate it. I think the front, I do, as much as I prefer the cornice and the water table on the original, I do prefer the more windows by the doors, so I do like that going from there.
Yeah.
I think that, that I think is an improvement. On the, the, again, on the east and west doors, I preferred having more, a little bit more instrumentation, but I like that we're containing, we're maintaining the window design with, with more of a traditional window than just a display window. The one question I would have, or criticism, the awning seems a little...
Yeah.
It seems like just a piece of tube with metal over it, a little too modern.
Actually, the awning right now, our, our thought on the awning is that it's something very simple, almost to the point that it goes away, because the awning would be, let me use this, that's this element right here. It's just really to protect people when they exit or enter the building. And that right there, once again, the structure would be a very similar color to the, to this, to the, to the block, and the roof of it, right now, we're looking at something either very, very thin or a glass roof, so that it almost goes away.
The, I guess, the, right now, we're showing the doors as pretty much glass panel, are we gonna, is it gonna still be that, or is it gonna be more filled in, shall we say?
Well, no... Well, no, it would still be glass. You would want glass at the entry so that you could see people. The one thing that we are looking at, Eric, and it's not showing up here, but is providing, providing the muttons on these doors also.
I think he was asking, yeah.
All right, so that the doors look a little more in relation to these openings versus what we call curtain wall, which is, which is what we have here, right? And here. And the other thing, you know, we, we have a monochromatic approach here. We're also look at, looking at a monochromatic approach here. So, so the, the building becomes really sort of, becomes, it becomes almost honest in its openings, because you see the glass versus seeing a lot of other stuff.
The door, the rear entrance facing north onto Washington, ABR had some concerns over that.
The rear entrance facing north.
Over by the, not to the count, whoever, the rear entrance by, between the auxiliary gym and the loading dock.
Oh, they, they had a few comments, a few minor comments.
Okay, because I.
About some of the brick detailing.
Okay, but there, it wasn't, it was nowhere near like the other ones then?
No, not at all. Actually, actually, it, they, they ended up approving what we had.
So we're hoping that tomorrow, they're gonna say yes on the remaining five percent?
That's, that's what we're hoping, and, and, you know, this is what we're presenting. We're presenting these images as well as, you know, as well as these ones. And they, as you know, Eric, they print out a lot better.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Than on this little screen. And you can, you know, and I always, a lot of times I squint to see proportions and scale and all that. And, and for the front entry, you could start to see how, how these elements here, in regards to opening versus, you know, solid versus void, start to really relate to this. So if you think of it that way, versus, oh, I didn't get my cornice, I didn't get this, I didn't get that, you still have proportions of the original in the architecture of the new. So we thought that that was really sort of important. And that's why even, you know, we, we met with, we met with the Steves to talk about this a little bit. We added more windows here, because we didn't like the proportion of the solid versus the void. And this is really where, you know, students go from one floor to the other. So what's nice, and, and we can all see this right now, is that when you're driving down Cedar, you're going to be able to see students go up and down these steps, which is really so positive.
I think it looks good.
Thank you.
I just had one small and probably stupid observation, but it was when you just now mentioned the awning being possibly glass, or very thin metal to make it disappear, which I appreciate the disappearing part. My only recent experience with the glass awning is over at the rec center, the city rec center.
Okay.
Which is also glass.
Yeah.
And which, within about a month of after it's been cleaned, becomes kind of filthy and frightening overhead, with just like general debris and leaves.
Oh, okay.
And whatever else that happens. I don't know how it all gets there, there's no media trees, but it, it becomes kind of an eyesore pretty quickly, until they clean it off again. And I don't know how quickly we're scheduled to do windows and everything.
We, we have these, you know.
Considering this is gonna be like eight feet over people's heads, I think.
Yeah, this is eight feet. That's where we have them. So it is approachable in regards to maintenance.
Right.
And we can look at.
A good garden hose will do it.
Well, a garden hose will do it. If, if we weren't to use that, I'll be honest, it'll probably be some sort of, some sort of metal roof that you would see, that you see actually, and I'm trying to find one of these images that shows the tower. But I'll just go to my bad elevations.
Oh, there it is.
You know, some of the tower has, what, what I'm thinking was at one time lead coated copper, and now it's probably a, a turn coated copper, which has that silvery look. I think if we were to go with some sort of, of metal on there, that it would be something like that, and probably have a seam, what we call a standing seam. So that you would have that sort of, that you would have that sort of reference back to 1925, when the original building was built. And the other thing about it is, if you remember our discussions about materials, we were always very, very concerned about adding materials to the building. You know, we didn't want to add materials to add materials. What that would do, if we do go with the metal, is, you know, once again, we talked about this being some sort of, I'm gonna just say gray or silver, almost like an anodized color, that would then relate to this. And the grays look, look really, really great with the color of the existing sandstone that's on the building. So it has that really, really sort of elegant look at the entry that, that Cleveland Heights High School deserves, after years of entering into that mud puddle in the back. And I don't want to call it the back, because it's really not the back of a building, but, but the entry was sort of a stair. So now, when students enter, they enter into not only a nice inviting space that's filled with natural light, but it's also tall, so, so you see activity.
That's great.
The, the large block between the, the vertical element of the windows.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That is, is that gonna be a macerie product, or what is that?
No, that would be, and don't get frightened, that would be some sort of metal product. Okay? Yeah, it would be styrofoam. You could do drive it, but. No, we, we would look at something that would match in color to the windows. So that you get, you know, a lot of these buildings from, I'm gonna say the 1910s and 1920s, and don't quote me on my history, because sometimes I get it wrong, but have, have, I don't know if it's, there's either some sort of stone between, or a lot of times there's bronze in between the windows. So it has that sort of reminiscent approach to, to this element right here.
Sort of like the, like the, in like the, in Bozart with the library, where you've got like a three stories of windows in, in between.
In between, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's sort of what's happening here.
Was that an ABR request, or is that, or this is an?
No, no, this wasn't an ABR request. We, we, we looked at a lot of different, different approaches to this entry, and based on, based on the architecture of the 1925 building, the architecture of the additions, discussions not only with ABR, but also with the board, with, you know, with the principal, with, with the staff, we thought that this was the appropriate direction to go in regards to entry.
But sort of like the panels we have in, in sandstone in the front, but it's got more ornamentation.
Yes, they do have more ornamentation there. That was a different time, though.
That's true.
You know? If, if that could be done.
In a different budget.
In a different, yeah, that's exactly right. That's exactly right.
I'm sorry, so the ones, we have two versions here, but this one with the more windows on the front.
Yeah, the one with the more windows on the front.
It's what you'd be presenting.
Yeah.
Or, or at least I had this one as well.
Oh, you had that one as well? That was, we added more windows after that.
Which is, I agree with Eric, it's, yeah, more windows is a huge.
Yeah, yeah, the more windows really adds to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay, we are moving on to finance. First, can I have a motion to approve item G1, the financial reports?
So moved.
Second. No, this, monthly financial report, so unless there's any questions, that's, nothing unusual there.
The only thing is that when we look at our grand total, we, it's got this huge, we seem to be much more flush than we normally are because of the money from the capital project.
Correct.
Is there, is this an official document for the state, or is there any way to put a note that lets folks know why it's, we have $180 million there?
Well, this is a system-generated report that the auditors ask us for, but we could put some kind of a notation on it, just so there's no confusion.
Right, because if someone makes a request for it, I could see them saying, hey, what do you, you know, you've got so much money.
Yeah, look, $136 million.
Exactly, so.
Any other comments? Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Kobel?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes. And next, I need a motion to approve item G2, the five-year forecast.
So moved. Second.
So, yes, I'll remind everyone that statutorily required to approve the five-year forecast at least twice a year. That would happen in October and May. So this would be the October forecast. And again, we can bring this to you as often as circumstances change, and, and if there are any material changes that would warrant us doing so, we would do that. And, and again, for the viewing audience, you have three years of actual numbers, you have the current year budget, and then you have four years forecasted out. So that's what we have in this forecast. I guess just the, the biggest point I would make in the difference between this forecast and the previous forecast in May, is that the reductions, the staffing reductions that the board approved for the school year are incorporated into this forecast. So the $3.7 million in staff, and then the million two in the, kind of the non-salary items, are all included for a total of $5 million in reductions for this five-year forecast, which brought us to where we expected it would bring us to. And the only other substantive change with this forecast is that the Ed Choice scholarships are also built into this forecast and the deductions that we're seeing there, which actually is showing up as the increase you see under expenditures, purchase services slash tuition. If you look from 2015 to 2016, you'll see a significant jump there, and that is, that is a result of the, the Ed Choice scholarship deduction, which is considered a tuition expense, even though it's a deduction from our foundation payments from the state.
So it's $3 million?
All told, between that and, and community school and charter deductions. Other than that, the, we have the, the, the real estate and the revenue sources are flatlined more or less, and, and I think that's something that we expected and we saw from this biennial budget, other than losing a little bit of money from tangible personal property, which doesn't affect us as much as others, and we've discussed that before. And that's that. I, I mean, there's nothing, nothing else really unusual or unexpected with this forecast, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Timing wise, what is your, while the state requires, these are April and October, right? What would your recommendation be for timing for any next conversation around the five-year forecast?
I think that we would recommend that we, we've already started a conversation about staffing for next year, and that there, there will be a comprehensive approach and, and a multi-faceted approach to, to staffing, which could, is the big thing about your forecast. I mean, 80% of our budget, just like any other school districts, is, is staff. We're staff-serving kids. So I think that the staffing could impact the forecast moving forward, so we're gonna try to wrap up staffing early this year, so that we can see if that has any material impact on our financial position.
What does early mean?
January-ish. I think that's what we've committed to, yeah.
So even though Mr. Kobel and I will no longer be up here, would you expect that that come, that you want the board to have that conversation in, at a, at a meeting in February, or still that can wait till an April meeting?
I mean, I, I would, I would think we would probably want to bring that sooner rather than later. We wouldn't wait until May for the next five-year forecast.
February could be the preview, and then, you know, a month or two, a couple months later, make it a, whatever it's official.
Yeah. And, and again, you can, you can prove it as often. We could bring a five-year forecast, see every month, so.
Right, I understand, but that's not necessary.
Right, but I think that we would want to bring a new forecast to the board in February, and then again in May, you know, for the formal adoption as well.
Oh, it's May, okay, yeah. It's just these artificial, it's artificial, it's not an artificial deadline, it's just a, it's just the, the, the timing for it, statutory deadline. The timing isn't always the best for how decisions are really made and.
Well, true, because in fact, you know, the, the, the Octo, or the May is, is often silly, because it's too late, your staffing is finished.
Right.
And you don't have your final end-of-year numbers for that fiscal year, and so you don't know what your tax collections are, but, you know, that's the way it goes. I mean, the tax collections now in October, we know the tax collections for the previous fiscal year, and you see all the actual, you know, the 15, fiscal year 15 numbers are all actuals now in this forecast, as opposed to May. And everything came in very close to what we expected it to, so.
Other questions? Okay, Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Kobel?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
I don't really have much for the board president's report this evening, other than to say that I'm, I, I can't tell you how pleased I am at both the specific positive feedback that we've had about the transition to Heights at the Wiley campus. You know, we've heard from residents, we've heard from neighbors of the building, that it was nowhere near what they had been concerned about, and that's a real, that's a good thing. We hear from students and from teachers and from people that it's been just a really nice transition. There are some, some, always some glitches around, especially the, the traffic issues at the beginning. We talked about those last time, and those have improved. And do you have anything that you want to add to that at all?
No, we, RTA informed us that they've added two buses, in the AM and PM, so they've really working closely with us, and they're going to monitor it for the winter months, as, you know, to see if we're gonna have more ridership. So that's working out well. South Euclid is committed to making, ensuring all the sidewalks are gonna be cleared for snow, and we're, University of Heights has as well. We have our sheriff deputies, who will now be our crossing guards, out of next Monday.
Okay.
So we've, we've started that. So again, just making sure, it's, it's working well.
Yeah.
And the students are really, it's amazing to see all the extra bicycles, so we have a lot of students riding their bicycles. So the bike racks are full now.
We'll see what happens in February.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. But it's, it's going well.
Hopefully RTA ridership, right?
Yes, 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 yes.
But that's, that's it. Do we have any unfinished business? Any new business? Board committee reports?
Cal, anything from the University of Heights, wherever that committee is?
Technology?
No, that, that hasn't met, it hasn't met again. After they decide on the iPads and all, the.
So they're done? They have no more?
I think they're done for now. They may, you know, they may bring it back again.
I've got, I guess I got two or three, Facilities Accountability Committee, I have no report, because they haven't met. They should be meeting two weeks.
A week from Thursday?
Well, a week and a, or two weeks from Thursday.
Right, the 22nd.
Yeah, a couple days after our meeting.
Sorry.
That should be a big one, because they, a lot of stuff for them to digest. From the Alumni Foundation, the next open house for Heights gear is October 24th. And then those who are interested, they can buy tickets for the Alumni Foundation's cocktail party on November 12th. Mr. Zucker is selling tickets, so be sure to see him afterwards, because I know all of you want to buy your tickets in advance. You can get it from Cal. So that's it that I've got for my reports.
Ron, nothing?
No.
No? Correspondence and announcements. I guess I, I don't have the dates with me, but this is a conversation that you and I had, and I think we should announce that the, the, the Fall Musical, which is Grease, is November, who has it? Eight, nine, 10? Do you have it? Scott, no one? I'm sorry. Fifth through the eighth. There's a, a minor change from most recent years because of transportation and because of space at the auditorium, that all grades will not be participating at this temporary site like they have in, in years past. So maybe you want to say a little more about that?
Yes, in the past, the elementary and the middle school students have participated. And again, the venue is a lot smaller, and they have the orchestra pit, and so kind of prevents our students from sitting on the stage as they've done in the past. So the teachers in the middle school and elementary, they all decided that for this year and next year, that they were just really focused on their school-based performances and not participate in the high school performance. So just for the two years, and then we'll go back when they.
We just wanted people to know as early as possible.
Yes, yes, yes. So communications went out today through the fam, through the, to the schools to give the information to the families.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Kobel?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.